Commissioner Dodge?
Here.
Commissioner Laborman?
Here.
Commissioner Rice?
Here. Let us stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And we have two presentations today, and the first one is in honor of the Arab American Month. And would you like me to read from this first?
Do you want to have them up first?
I think come on, come on up and introduce yourselves and tell us a little bit that you'd like us to know, and then we have a proclamation for you.
Good afternoon. My name is Youssef Elzain. I'm a resident of Dayton since 2001. Huber Heights in 1998 when I, we moved here. It's been an honor to call Dayton and Montgomery County home and appreciate you for honoring us today with the Arab American Heritage Month.
And I'm Lamise Mubaslat. I work for the county for the past thirty-two years. I'm honored to work for the county and to call this home. I'm the past president of Dayton Arab American Forum, and I really thank you for what you're doing for us.
Good afternoon. I'm Tony Masood. I've been in Dayton since 1991, that's thirty-one years, and retired with rentals. It'll be twenty years this June first. So I've been with, involved with Dayton for over, almost fifty years. And currently I'm retired, and I do a lot of volunteer work for many organizations here in Dayton. And it's so nice to see all my friends up there. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. And so I am not going to read the whole proclamation, but I'll pick out a few of those, and then we'll present it to you and take a picture if that's okay with you. All right. For over a century, Arab Americans have been making valuable contributions to virtually every aspect of American society: in medicine, law, business, education, technology, government, military service, and culture. And since migrating to America, men and women of Arab descent have shared their rich culture and traditions with neighbors and friends while setting fine examples of model citizens and public servants. Arab immigrants brought their resilient family values, strong work ethic, dedication to education, and diversity in faith and creed that have added strength to our great democracy. Arab Americans have also enriched our society by sharing the entrepreneurial, American spirit that makes our nation free and prosperous. The history of Arab Americans remains neglected or defaced by misconceptions, bigotry, and anti-Arab hate in the forms of crimes and speech. Arab-American issues such as civil rights abuses, harmful stereotyping, and bullying must be combated in the forms of education and awareness. Arab Americans join all Americans in the desire to see a peaceful and diverse society where every individual is treated equally and feels safe. The Arab American Foundation and Dayton Arab American Forum celebrate the contributions Arab Americans have made to society, helping us to build a better nation. Therefore, the Board of County Commissioners of Montgomery County does hereby recognize April 2022 as National Arab American Heritage Month, and we encourage our residents to join in this special observance. And it's signed by all three of us, and we would be privileged to present this to you and have our picture taken with you. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you for sharing this with us.
Yeah. This is great.
Yeah, I shared this also electronically with Carrie, so hopefully she'll pass it on to you and staff.
Yeah.
It's fifty-six long presentation, but well, well put by the form, by the founder of Arab America Foundation in Washington DC. If you have any questions, please feel free to reach out, and we'll be more than happy to answer any questions.
Thanks. Absolutely. And I have personally had a great privilege to work with all three of you in numerous endeavors. So this is recognizing very, very good friends and their wonderful community for me. Come on up here. Come up here. And so should I give it to you? All right. Proud, I'm proud. All right, so I meant every word. We meant every word. So it is really our honor to present this to you and your community and the important role you play in our community overall. Thank you. Yes.
Everyone's invited, August 26th, 27th, 28th, Lebanese Festival at Fifty Nut Row in Washington Township. And we've been doing that for many years in Montgomery County.
Absolutely. It's a great festival.
And I think the Egyptian Festival since September during my, my anniversary.
Okay, all right. We love our festivals. All of them, we do. All right.
Getting it nice and tight, maybe a couple of different rows.
Okay. You're short.
Look at the tall people.
I'm not much shorter. Yes, you are.
We're all kind of.
Everybody smile. One, two, three. Great. I think I have something. Thank you.
Yeah, you didn't want to be in the picture.
And now we have another favorite group. It is Animal Control Officer Appreciation Week. So we have the Director of our Animal Resource Center, Bob Gruel, up here to say a few words.
Well, thank you, Commissioners. Good afternoon. County Administrator, Executive Leadership. Last week was actually Animal Care and Control Appreciation Week, along with two other national weeks in our industry: National Public Safety Telecommunications Week, as well as National Dog Bite Prevention Week. So here in Montgomery County, our dispatch and our officer staff have, they've all chosen this profession to represent us with integrity and compassion, and certainly empathy for the animals we serve and the citizens we help. You know, as the Animal Resource Center has formally been recognized as a leader in the animal welfare field by the National Animal Care and Control Association, as well as we were recognized as the Animal Shelter of the Year by the Ohio Dog County, excuse me, the Ohio County Dog Wardens Association in 2020. So we are often looked upon and called upon by colleagues around the state and occasionally nationally on the, on the great work that our Animal Care and Control Officer does. You know, it's with these men and women here that many we have today that we'll introduce in a second. They do, they do a whole lot more than responding to calls, stray calls, and checking on dog licenses. For example, our dispatchers connect with citizens, law enforcement agencies. They take over ten thousand calls annually. They assign officers. They provide valuable information and research, and all of this in an effort to keep communities safe and to protect animals from further harm and despair. In 2021, our ACOs responded to a total of nine thousand and eight calls for service, and of those, four hundred and fifty-six of them were assisting other law enforcement agencies. And finally, our officers unfortunately had to impound fourteen hundred and twenty-two dogs since January of 2021. But the great news is with terrific effort and their diligence, they did in fact return a hundred and sixty-five dogs to their owners' homes before ever leaving the truck. So they were never impounded at the Animal Resource Center. So that's remarkable. Fun fact, I guess statistically, did you know that across the county and the, and the state and the country that animal control officers actually have more contact with the general public than police officers do? So not many people do know that. Aside from enforcing Ohio Revise Code and responding to service calls, our officers spend countless hours in the field educating our citizens and our pet owners on dog laws, ordinances, essential nutrition requirements to keep pets healthy, dog precautions, and animal awareness tips to keep pets healthy and humans safe, and in general, overall responsible pet ownership. This is best illustrated by a program that we have called the Animal Awareness Program, which is essentially a diversion program recognized by our courts that gives minor offenders an opportunity to attend the curriculum in lieu of attending court and/or paying a hefty fine. In addition, our officers are also working with local branches of the United States Postal Service, instructing carriers on dog safety, and responding to problem areas where carriers work in order to resolve dog-related and owner confinement issues. So before I do in fact introduce the team that we have with us today, I did want to share briefly an email that ACCO Field Supervisor Bob Sexton and myself received from one of our dispatchers about two of our officers that came through last week. And I thought it captures really, really well the camaraderie and the teamwork that our, that our, our folks have for each other. She writes, "I want to give recognition to Candy Broaddus and David Walthall for their compassion last week on a board of health owner surrender. I don't recall the activity, but the owner's name is Rebecca Lewis. Rebecca is a sixty-seven-year-old lady who rescued an eighty-pound pit bull from Craigslist because she couldn't stand the thought of the dog not having a home. The pit bull attacked her in January and again two weeks ago. When I dispatched both Candy and David to her address for the surrender, I gave Ms. Lewis a call, alerting her that the ACCOs were on their way. And as I was talking to her, she started breaking down and sobbing, saying she didn't know what else to do, but now she's afraid of the dog. She tried to comfort the dog, and, and we tried to comfort her by saying, "Sometimes this is the best outcome because we have to put human life before animal life." She gave, I gave her, her daughter a phone call and informed her that her mom was pretty upset. And she, and the daughter said that her mother was the type of person that would rather she be hurt than the dog. So I texted Candy a heads up about Ms. Lewis grieving. And shortly after they arrived on scene, David gave her a call, gave me a call so he could run the credit card for their transaction. And as she was getting information, I heard Ms. Lewis in the background, still wailing and still sobbing, saying she wished she could have been a better dog owner as the dog deserved better than her. I could hear Candy softly telling her in the background that she's done an amazing job by giving this dog a great home and that she's been the best owner for the dog. Ms. Lewis is still very upset, but agreed, and Candy continued to comfort her and explained that the dog's size and behavior can be sometimes too much. In fact, Candy even admitted that the dog would have been too big and too much for even her to handle. So she finished the transaction with David, and she writes, "I started tearing up just hearing the compassion that came from our officers. I was so proud of them. I know that they do this daily, but hearing this amplified my respect for them, so I just wanted to pass this along to their supervisors." And I, I really couldn't think of a better story really to, to, to capture. So poignant about how, how well our officers work together and how, how good they are with the citizens. It's scenarios like that that go a long way, day in and day out, week after week. And they often go unnoticed in our community. And I can certainly tell you that it doesn't go unnoticed by our staff. It doesn't go unnoticed by their peers. It certainly doesn't go unnoticed by me. And I really am truly grateful and have a, have a great feeling for what these remarkable employees do every day. So I guess in closing, I'd like to express my gratitude to our dispatchers and to our officers for what they do and what they're currently doing for the pets and people in Montgomery County. So unfortunately, our dispatchers are not here today. I did want to give a shout out to Elizabeth Cusick and Peyton Pleska, who run the dispatch shop like a well-oiled sewing machine, I suppose, and our office, officer, Animal Care and Control Officer staff. So I'd like to recognize tho, those fine young men and women if they'd like to. Well, maybe not so young, right, Bob? But I had a crack on it, so. I'm going to introduce our Field Supervisor, Robert Sexton, our ACCO Team Leader, Brian Baker, our ACCO Chris Byrd, ACCO Candy Broaddus. Candy has with her Freya, who is a little Sharpay mix.
No, I can't.
Officer Torben Peterson, Officer Jessica France, and Officer Elizabeth Barnett. And not here with us today are Officer David Walthall and Officer Roland McIntosh. So thank, lastly, thank, I would like to thank you, our Commissioners, Michael, Chris, all of our executive leadership team, for your guidance, your encouragement, and your support over these last few years. Truly knowing the issues, understanding the challenges, and providing the resources that we need to help people and pets in this community thrive is a testament to your courage and fortitude. And you all make our lives, the lives of our animals and the lives of our human companions better all across Amer, all across Montgomery County for that support. So thank you, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, team. And while I do have a proclamation, you've said it all so poignantly yourself. I don't think I need to repeat it. But we truly do appreciate everything that everyone at the Animal Resource Center does, especially these who are being recognized today. We, we do understand what a journey we've all been on these past few years. And you have been the ones, day in and day out, and you've earned every credit of being recognized, you know, as the center for the year in Ohio in 2020, correct? But in our eyes, you are the best in the country every day. So regardless of whether you get an award, you have our best wishes and, and appreciation and gratitude because we know that you do everything possible to make our citizens and our pets in this county have better lives and thrive, and we're so proud to support you in every way we can. So thank you, thank you, thank you for all you do.
Well, and you know we get it because we all have little four-legged buddies, so we know.
Yes. So can we get a picture with you?
Sure, absolutely.
The whole team?
Sure.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
It's a Sharpay mix.
How old?
About three months.
It's not wrinkly like, do they get wrinkly when they get older?
Mix.
We do know it's a mix.
And that's it. She's going home with you today. Oh, Commissioner Dodge.
All right, all right. So, come on, please. Awesome. Okay, thanks. But honestly, thank you all. What do we know about her?
Do we know?
How long?
She's complicated.
Hi. My first dog that I got from the shelter.
Yeah, oh yeah.
It's with you.
I love her so much. She's fine.
I love her.
Thinking ahead.
Yeah, thinking ahead.
My first dog I got from the shelter is fifteen now.
I'm going to call Dennis ahead of time.
Tell him, give him a warning.
He wouldn't be surprised.
No, he wouldn't be surprised.
Bob, I just wanted to tell you and the staff, thank you. Thanks, Bob. I know you were on your way out. Tell the whole team. When you look at where we came from, especially in 2018 to where we're at now, it's just amazing, remarkable turnaround. It's just remarkable. And that's, that's due to the work of you and the team. So thank you.
Yeah.
While I had you, Bob, I also, did you want to talk a little bit about adoption and microchip for the specials that we have? Yeah, sure. So May is actually recognized as National Pet Month. So as a result, we're going to offer own pets in the community a five-dollar microchip. Now normally we would put, those are on sale for twenty-five dollars. But a micro, microchipping your animal is so important, as is licensing. It is the ticket home for that animal should they stray or get lost. All of our law enforcement agencies out there, all of our veterinarian agencies out there. Of course, we have scanners. It's real easy to determine where an animal belongs. So we are offering a discount for owned animals in May, so we're super excited about that. Our adoptions remain at, at zero right now, so we, you, you have to of course pay a license fee. But with that is included a spay and neuter, or neuter rather, a microchip, as well as all of, becoming up to date on all, all of their shots. So fantastic deals. We've got some wonderful animals in our center right now that need a good loving home. So hopefully that weather breaks in May, and we'll get more people in, in the, in, in the center and more dogs out the door. So that's the goal. So we appreciate that. Thank you, Bob. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. And I just have a question on the, the chip. Do, do they take the, do they have to call for an appointment to the Animal Resource Center? Or they just bring the dog?
Well, at this point, we're still working those logistics out, but probably not. We'll just probably have an open admission lineup for folks. And, and we hope they take advantage of it because, you know, we offer more than just microchipping, right? Obviously, the license sales are critical for our, our financial strength. And, but beyond that, there's other tips, resources, information that we can get people and, and move them toward that'll help them be better responsible pet owners, and that's the goal, so. Bob, didn't we get scanners at one time for all of our jurisdictions? Yes, we did. Okay, great. Fantastic. Through your generosity, we did in fact offer that to a lot of the police, almost all of the police jurisdictions.
That's great.
Yeah, super thrilled.
And that helps them locate where the dog.
Oh, absolutely. Yeah, the goal is for us not to be involved, obviously, right? I mean, we had an incident last, what's today, Thursday or Tuesday? So Friday, we had an incident where a law enforcement team went out. Their scanner worked. They were able through a few phone calls, a little bit of networking. They involved us, and then they called their call off because they had located their owner. And that's the goal, to make sure that everybody in the community comes together to get these dogs where they belong. It's truly a huge partnership with all of our law enforcement. So we're thrilled that they're using it and using it well, so.
Great, great.
Thanks, Bob and Bob.
Thank you.
Thank you both.
All right. Our first item of business is our County Sheriff.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, Administrator, ladies and gentlemen. Why do I always have to follow the dog?
I know, you're the tough.
So we have several resolutions today. The first is Resolution 22-633 to set the date of May 10th, 2022, for the viewing and May 24th, '22, for the hearing on the Astoria Road Culvert Replacement Project in German Township. 634 is to authorize the county auditor to pay by warrant $65,934.81 to the city of Vandelia for permissive tax funds for the 2019 Northwoods Boulevard Reconstruction Phase One project. And we have one late item, Resolution 700, is to authorize an agreement with Carpenter Marty Transportation, Inc. for professional engineering services on the Dayton International Airport Northeast Logistics Access Project in the city of Vandelia and Butler Township. Job number 21-20 at a cost not to exceed $922,401 through June 30th of 2025. And there are further specifications in the agreement.
I move for approval. Second. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. County Sheriff.
Thank you, Commissioners. Under the County Sheriff, we have Resolution 635, authorizing a memorandum of understanding with the Federal Bureau of Investigation, or FBI, to delineate responsibilities of the Southern Ohio Safe Streets Task Force personnel and formalize relationships between participating agencies. We also have Resolution 636, submit a grant agreement application to the Ohio Department of Public Safety Office of Criminal Justice Services, American Rescue Plan Act in the amount of $300,000.
Move to approve. Second. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Common Police Court.
Under the Common Police Court, we have Resolution 637, authorizing an agreement with BIS Digital Systems for audiovisual equipment-related software package and a five-year preventative maintenance and support package for various courtrooms and jury rooms.
I'm in for approval. Second. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. County Administrator.
Under the County Administrator, on the Clerk's Office, we have approved the minutes of the meeting, the minutes of the meetings on April 12th, 2022. Resolution 638, approval of bills. And Resolution 639, approval of travel and expenses. Both those lists are available in the Clerk's Office.
Move to approve. Second. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Administrative Services.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. We have several resolutions for your consideration today, as well as one late item. The first resolution is 640. This is the approval of personnel actions. This list is available in Clerk's Office. 641 submits a grant application to the Ohio Department of Rehabilitation and Correction to expand the service delivery area of the Office of Reentry in an amount not to exceed $119,650. Resolution 642 authorizes a management services and consulting agreement with Dayton History for the operation and programming of Memorial Hall in an amount not to exceed $253,633.55 annually through December 31st of 2026. 643 amends the agreement with David J. Spradlin to serve as the Regional License Plate Reader Database Coordinator for the Ohio Homeland Security Region III by extending the term through July 22nd, 2022. 644 amends the price agreement for manhole lids and rings with Nina Foundry Company to allow an increase of 9.6% and extend the term through April 30th of 2023. 645 authorizes the purchase through a state term contact, excuse me, contract from Jack Dohany Company Incorporated of one 2115 combination sewer cleaner for the Environmental Services Department in an amount not to exceed $512,156.34. Resolution 646 requests the bids for a foam response trailer for the Office of Emergency Management. And the late item is number 661, and this is an authorization of an agreement with Page Freezer for social media archiving subscription services in an amount not to exceed $2,638 through May 2nd of 2023.
Move for approval. Second. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Environmental Services.
Thank you, Commissioners. Have Resolution 647 accept the subdividers contract from Ibrahim Saleh for the Lewis Circle Sanitary Extension Development. Resolution 648, release 100% of the performance bond and subdividers contract from ECC Mad River LLC for the Terra Retail Building. Following three are to accept easement deeds for the sanitary sewer lines and record the same. The first is Resolution 649, Ibrahim Saleh and Courtney Alcorn in connection with the Lewis Circle Sanitary Extension. 650, Thomas E. Spats and Elizabeth J. Spats in connection with the Hunter's Path Phase One Project. That's the .519 acres. And then the last one is Resolution 651 with Thomas E. Spats and Elizabeth J. Spats in connection with the Hunter's Path Phase One Project, .829 acres.
Move to approve. Second. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Human Services.
Thank you. Under Human Services Planning and Development, Resolution 652 will accept a grant from the Ohio Department of Development to provide financial assistance for rapid rehousing in the amount of $965,900. 653 will amend the agreement with Seabrooks for EC Impact Flux Plan Services by adding $31,087 to the original amount for revised total of $73,142 and extend the term through December 31st of 2023. We also have a late item under Human Services Planning and Development. It is 662, which will accept an amendment from the Ohio Children's Trust Fund to increase grant funds for child abuse and neglect prevention services in the amount, in an amount of $682,605.60 for revised total of $1,358,640.14 through state fiscal year 2023. Then under the Department of Job and Family Services, Resolution 654, will amend a grant from the Ohio Department of Job and Family Services for the Child for the Child Support Enforcement Agency's Access Visitation Program by increasing the grant amount by ten thousand, two hundred thirty-three dollars for a revised total of sixty-six thousand, two hundred thirty-three dollars. Six, six fifty-five will amend the agreement with Goris Counseling and Consulting, L L C, to provide crisis intervention and supportive services for the Children's Services Division by increasing the original amount by twelve thousand dollars for revised total not to exceed twenty-seven thousand, two hundred thirty-two dollars through December thirty-first of two thousand twenty-two. And then, six fifty-six, um, will authorize substitute care services with rights of passage uh, through March thirty-first of two thousand twenty-four. And six fifty-seven is also for, I'm sorry, is with Experino Information Solutions to provide credit reports for foster youth.
I move for approval.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And Business Services.
Thank you, commissioners. Under Business Services, Community and Economic Development, we have Resolution zero six five eight, advertise a finding of no significant impact and notice of intent to request the release of funds for the Community Development Block Grant C V Apple Street Shelter Renovation Project and Resolution zero six five nine, publish a notice of public hearing on housing and community development needs for Montgomery County Fiscal Year two thousand twenty-two annual action plan to discuss the performance of previously funded C D B G Home and E S G Projects and take public comments.
Move to approve.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. And we do have, uh, one comment by a citizen. Uh, your name is Willie, uh, is it Feaster?
Feaster.
Feaster, I apologize. And you shall, um, uh, give us your address and you have three minutes. Come up to the podium.
Willie Feaster, no address.
Okay.
Uh, can I start?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am. Uh, I'm here to talk about the Montgomery County Jail. August the eighth, last year, I was arrested for a crime I never committed. But that's what I will talk about. I want to talk about the conditions I had to suffer and many other people had to suffer daily in the Montgomery County Jail. The abuse, the, the harsh treatment. I was put in a, a twelve-month, twelve, uh, 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 cell with twelve inmates. We crammed up in there. One inmate caught COVID and he was taken out of there. They never sanitized the, the area. They left all the stuff in there. In the result of that, I caught COVID and damn near died. I was sick as a dog. I never got no medical treatment. I asked for medical treatment. I told them I was sick, I couldn't eat. Everything was wrong with me. I couldn't even get up out that bed. They still never gave me no type of treatment. They never came in there and tested nobody for COVID. Not one person was tested after the person who tested positive was moved out. They never came in there. They never sanitized. They never cleaned. They never brought nothing in there. Also, in the Montgomery County Jail, the abuse is going on. Okay, some people might say, well, they ain't none of the inmates, they ain't none of the dogs. They deserve what they get. No, they're still human beings, 'cause you have people in there never committed a crime or actually innocent, but if they do commit a crime, they still deserve to be treated like a human being. They don't get to eat. Other inmates beat them up, don't let them eat. It's, the supervision is horrible because the county jail is so outdated. It's old. C O's walk by, they, they purposely put inmates in situations to get beat up because of their crimes. They put them in there hoping somebody beat them up. Sex offenders, people who have committed rape. So, we gonna put you in here, hoping these young dudes beat you to death, take your food, which they do. They do that every day over there in the county jail. They do that. And sometimes staff still are, are very disrespectful to inmates in there. And sometime, they still are, are physically abusive. But three minutes cannot get me to the, the conditions of that Montgomery County Jail. It would take hours to get that thing right. Rob, Montgomery County Jail, Rod Strick, got a lot of issues still to this day with that Montgomery County Jail. It's horrible. It's nasty. It's abusive. The treatment is very, to me, and I, I don't want to say everybody in there, 'cause you got good people working in the Montgomery. Are very nice and very respectful every day and come in there and try to do a good job. But I'm gonna be back next week, God willing, to continue my issue with the Montgomery County Jail. And thank y'all.
Thanks, Mr. Feaster.
Thank you, Mr. Feaster.
It's good to see you again. All right. Our county administrator.
Commissioner, I think we have a, a late.
Oh, I don't know.
Oh, yeah, she just signed it.
Yeah.
Oh, sorry.
Excuse me, ma'am, would you like to speak?
Yes.
Could you come to the podium, please? Thank you.
Good afternoon, Ms. Sheen.
Good afternoon.
I live in Jefferson Township.
Okay, Marion, Marion Perry?
Yes.
Okay.
I live in Jefferson Township. Next week, hopefully, there'll be a lot more with me. I represent, I'm part of a group called N A J T. The problem being is some of the neighbors and the people moving in out there. One day, we had a fire. I think it was Saturday, Sunday. We had a neighbor that has two big dogs and a hog. His garage caught on fire. It messed up one house's neighbor's yard, and the fire was so intense, it messed up another neighbor's garage. The problem being is the people that are moving out there, they don't understand the rules, they don't understand the people. I am a senior citizen myself. Why I'm saying this is because I have a pet also. I have other neighbors that are moving in out there, and they have their own pets. The problem being is I missed a chance to talk to the pet people, the animal control. Reason being is the animals that people are moving in out there are the dangerous types. They had, uh, a small puppy. That puppy someday will grow up. Somebody will adopt him. If they adopting, like the man was talking about, the lady had to give up a pit bull. Our problem is we have pit bulls, cane corsels. Every type of dog that is on the dangerous list, we have called several times 'cause I myself was almost attacked by one of those dogs. Actually, what happens, I have a small dog. My dog was not licensed, he's licensed now. I have neighbors that have all those type of dogs. They're not licensed, and that should not be. They do a lot of things I will not mention here, but they operate, one thing I'll, I'll offer is they operate illegal chop shop on our street. They make a lot of noise. Most of the people on my street are seniors. That area used to be very quiet because of these people. It's no longer quiet. So, all I'm asking is that something be done per these neighbors and their pets? Because I checked with the county, and if it's a hardship on me being a senior to get a license, none of those dogs have license. One night, one of their dogs barked so loud, the whole night of, um, let's see, it was in March. The Oscars, I had to call the sheriff and say, could you do something about that dog? He's barked all night. It went almost until one or two o'clock, and most people, seniors wouldn't like to sleep at that time. So, I'm, all I'm asking is can you help us, please? That's it.
Thank you, ma'am. Can you be sure to leave your address, uh, with Chris? Chris, can you be sure to get her address so that we can, uh, Bob Grohl, who is here, who is our, uh, Director of Animal Resource Center?
Oh, I forgot to say one thing. All those dogs come to find out. She has four pit bulls, all males, and one is a cane corsel. He's the cousin of the pit bull, just like that little dog. Okay? She has one female, and that dog barked all night and the dogs in heat. Then we'll have to listen to them mate, and then we'll have to listen to when they give birth. So, that's all I have to say.
Okay. Could you leave your address, please?
Yes.
Chris, can you make sure you get it for me? Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Now, county administrator.
All right. Thank you, commissioners. Well, um, I want our area of businesses to know that we're having a diverse vendor outreach from noon to two o'clock on Thursday, May fifth, at the Business Solutions Center, uh, fourteen thirty-five Cincinnati Street in Dayton, Ohio. And again, that's fourteen thirty-five Cincinnati Street in Dayton, Ohio, from noon to two P M. on Thursday, May fifth. Uh, our community is comprised of about twenty-three percent African-American and Latino citizens combined. And yet, only one point five percent of our registered vendors are minorities. Uh, and keep in mind that, you know, we are almost a billion-dollar operation. So, it's important that, um, you're part of our spend. We know the power of diversity, and we know when people from different backgrounds and cultures collaborate, it brings better ideas to our community. Uh, this diverse vendor outreach is an opportunity to learn how to become a registered vendor and with our county and to do business with us, and that's vitally important. We also want to go over several projects, uh, and bid opportunities that we have coming down the pike. There is no need to register. Please call us at nine three seven, two two five, four six nine nine. That's nine three seven, two two five, four six nine nine, if you have any questions. Thank you, commissioners.
Thank you, Michael. You know, that number is, it's kind, it's very depressing that only one point five percent of our registered vendors are minorities. So, we've got to make sure we get the word out. I know we will, but, um, this is, uh, really important that we get this, May fifth, two o'clock.
And you know, commissioners, uh, we're thankful. We have really been pushing this. Our purchasing director's been pushing this. Uh, we've had several of these vendor outreaches, uh, to go out into the community. So, uh, we're doing everything we can to try to pull as many vendors in as possible. So, thanks for your support on this.
Thank you. Well, I mean, I, I think we all agree that we want as many people taking advantage of the opportunities as possible. So, first step is show up and find out how you get qualified and on the list so that you'll find out about opportunities coming in the future years. So, be there. Um, also, we've already heard, uh, today that was Arab-American heritage and then animal control officers. Well, we're not done. Um, this week is National Parks Week. Bet you didn't know that, and we all love our national parks. But it's also the week that we all know, it's Earth Week. It's Earth Week.
The twentieth.
Yeah, and, uh, I believe this Friday is Earth Day, so there will be lots and lots of, uh, very cool activities happening around the globe, uh, not only here in Montgomery County. But, uh, Matt, uh, you and your team, each and every day, our environmental and services staff works to maintain all of our utilities while educating the public about how to reduce, reuse, and recycle. We talk about it all the time. So, hats off to all of you and all that you do. Um, and we released our, uh, Lamise, who was here earlier, uh, is our Sustainability Director, and we released our Sustainability Report last year in an effort, we try to, uh, practice what we preach. And so, we also are trying to put our best foot forward by reducing our footprint, our, our carbon footprint, uh, in the scheme of things. So, if anyone's interested, I think you should check it out. You can find the Sustainability Report and lots of other useful information to help us protect our planet that we'll be celebrating this Friday at M C Ohio dot org, under the Environmental Services tab. So, please, please, please do that. Uh, let us all, you know, uh, all these climate changes, I mean, it's snowing in April eighteenth, and it seems to just be getting worse each spring. So, let's do our part to make it go back where it's not crazy like this, if we can do it. So, that's what I have.
Something similar along the same thing, and that is that, um, this Saturday, April twenty-third, we're going to be having a styrofoam recycling event, and it's going to be in Huber Heights at the Rose Music Center. Again, it's this Saturday, April twenty-third, from nine until one o'clock. You know, we've had four events just like this in the past fifteen months, collecting nearly eleven thousand pounds of styrofoam. And think about that, considering how light it is, you know that's a lot of styrofoam. So, we plan to make this a quarterly initiative, and I want to thank Matt and your, uh, staff there and your team and all their community partners for making this happen, especially Echo Development, the mason-based company that processes the material for repurposing. So, want to give a shout out to them. So, it's always, uh, these have always been a great event. We've been there to most of them, so.
And we always have to add in, do not bring your food containers because they cannot accept them because they've been spoiled by the machinery.
Yeah.
And, um, you know, the way all the carryout and everything is these days, you get a heck of a lot of styrofoam. And then people are not happy when they show up with it and you can't take it. So, just warn you, don't bring that particular styrofoam, but everything else, save it and bring it. I know I've been saving mine. I got a big box full of it just this week, so it's like, oh, good, I can take it on Saturday.
That's right, this Saturday.
Yeah.
Huber Heights.
Yeah.
Well, April is a month that many of us look forward to, including myself, for many reasons. Baseball, big reason, right, Emily? Reds. Um, and some years, it's a sign of warm weather coming, right? Not this year, not yet, but maybe this weekend, I heard it's gonna be in the eighties. But, you know, um, it's also, as we've heard for the last few weeks, um, April seems to be the month that everybody celebrates.
Something.
Yeah, whether it's an organization or a cause. And so, that's great. And, and so, um, April is especially important to us, the county, as we, all these other things we've recognized that we've heard about today, um, we recognize National County Government Month.
Oh.
Yeah, the whole month, April.
It would take a month to say everything we do.
And National County Government Month gives us an opportunity to celebrate our county and specifically our employees with the county, all the hard work. You know, when you look at our, uh, our mission and all the different departments, uh, most of them are represented right there. You know, we have a lot going on, and I think it's just a great time for us to, uh, celebrate, celebrate our effective programs, just like we heard from our, our Animal Resource Center team. So, today specifically, not the whole month, just today, National Organization of Counties is recognizing County Health Day. Okay? So, I think next month, or next year, what we should do in April, have every day, every week, how many colors can we possibly wear to celebrate?
All the different colors.
I know, but it's, it's great, uh, because we do need to take a moment and pause and, and thank everyone and celebrate. So, um, I just wanted to make sure, because N A C O tells us to, and C C A O tells us to, uh, stronger counties, stronger Ohio. Um, it's a great opportunity for us to showcase the important work that we're doing. So, again, I just want to thank all of our amazing employees that serve our citizens and take so much pride in their work. So, thank you all.
Fortunately, Commissioner, we've got the lights fixed on the buildings to where we can change the colors to anything.
But day is it.
As all these days change, so.
That's right.
Mm-hmm. And then I just want to remind everyone that, of course, we've celebrated, um, Reentry Week last week, or Reentry Month, and it, but next Monday, the twenty-fifth, from nine to one, we are going to be having an event, a reentry fair for all of our returning citizens. Uh, there will be vendors there, all of our partners, whether it's Close at Work or others. And we'll have representatives from our, um, Reentry Career Alliance, uh, to help with what, whatever, as we always say, men and women come to us, um, and we meet them where they are. So, whether, you know, you need help with everything or you need help with one thing, we'll be there. And we'll have a lot of different resources there on Monday, the twenty-fifth, from nine to one, at our West Town Employment Opportunity Center. That's it for me.
All right. Thank you. Well, our next, um, Montgomery County Commission meeting will be held next Tuesday, April twenty-sixth, at one thirty P M. So, do I have? at one thirty P M. So, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So, move.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. We are adjourned. All of you have a wonderful week. Happy Earth Day.